I just want to say two things, okay? We're all going to try to keep it short, so I'm going to say two things. First thing, the process was what I was most angry about. We had a meeting this morning, thank you. The process was eight people and a mayor putting this together and sending it to us, already wrapped in a ribbon and ready to go. I think this was a slap in the face to the Northland. We deserve a voice. But that said, the reason, and today, this morning, we had a meeting at the Northland Chamber, and there was a lot of questions, some great dialogue. But, you know, to me, it was, why wasn't this had on the floor of the city council? Because there are two, there's, the one question I have is, we are, we are asking our city manager to negotiate with the Board of Police Commissioners for the $42 million. There's a lot of problems there. First off, what happens if you can't come to an agreement? What happens to that money? And I don't know. The other thing is, is there's going to be lawsuits. The Board of Commissioners is going to file a lawsuit tomorrow. What happens to that $42 million that's sitting, that's sitting in a, in a fund that can't be touched? So what happens to that? You know, when people talk about defunding the police, I don't think this is defunding the police, but it could be come defunding the police, because nobody knows how long it's going to take to get to that money. So those are the two things I'm very concerned about, and then, that's about my two minutes. So I really want to thank you all for coming out. This is just phenomenal. So thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming out. You know, this is the kind of dialogue we should have been given. We should have been afforded the opportunity to have transparent, accountable, and collaborative government. And that is the kind of government we expect from our city council. And unfortunately, nine members of our council decided that the rest of us didn't have the opportunity to speak. And so what happened was, they rammed something through without anybody else's knowledge. Because they had the votes, they did something that then said, the people that voted for us, the people who actually we work for, didn't have the opportunity to say what they wanted to say about it. Pro or con, if you are for defunding the police, or against the defunding the police, either voice should be heard. And that's exactly what should have happened, and it didn't happen. And I am sorry to all of you that the process that we are supposed to uphold, we did not. And that's unacceptable, and that is something I'll continue to fight for. Obviously, I support law enforcement, I support law and order in our city. I will continue to fight for that. I mean, if we had a bad police department, I would not be supportive of them. They are good people, they are people full of integrity and honor, and they work hard every single day to do a job we don't even understand. I probably already took my two minutes. However, I'm going to cheat just a little. Senator Tony Lutkemeyer at the State House has been working diligently. He's been working really hard to ask the governor to create a special session this summer, and our state reps from the Northland, I'm so grateful they have joined us tonight. They are working hard, they sent a letter on our behalf to the governor, asking also for a special session. We have also drafted a letter saying, we need support here from the governor's office to help us, help our law enforcement. So we are working diligently. So I'm going to tell you, Tony wished he could be here tonight, but because he couldn't, he sent a statement, which I'm going to read really quick. "Like all of you, I was shocked and disturbed by the city's decision to cut $42 million from the KCPD's budget. The city's conduct, which was done under cloak of secrecy, without consultation with the Northland council members, the police chief, the Board of Police Commissioners, is the exact opposite of government transparency and accountability. When our city is facing record-high crime, this is a time where the council should be supporting the police department, not defunding it. I'm grateful for the resolve of the four city council members who represent the Northland and voted no against this radical move. As one of the state senators who serves the Kansas City Northland, I'm firmly committed to working with the governor, legislators, and other stakeholders to address this issue, whether in a special session or in a regular session, this abuse cannot go unchecked. Although I could not make it, I appreciate your time attending this town hall. We will let our voices be heard." So that is what we need to do. We cannot tolerate defunding our police, we cannot tolerate poor leadership by this mayor and our colleagues, and we must have accountability and transparency in the process of a defunding of $42 million.
This is the first time in a week where I felt like I stood up in front of a bunch of people who are friends, so thank you all very much for being here. I like to follow Heather and Kevin, because I don't have seen too much. There is a lot of misinformation floating around about what the council did. Had we had an open process as we treat just about every other ordinance that comes before us, a lot of that information would have gone away, that misinformation. But as it is, we still have it, and we're looking at what was done, and I still have questions about what it means. You know, we're supposed to allocate $42 million back to the police department. This morning, the mayor said, well, they're already doing that $42 million probably, because they've got the social workers, the CIOs, and other stuff. I thought, well, they're already doing it, why are we going through this exercise and raising this kind of a concern? Why are we scaring people this way? And what we're supposed to allocate it to are very ambiguous categories of expenses, community service. What does that mean in connection with the police? I don't know. There are other questions, how it's allocated. I look at each one of them, what does that mean? I don't know. It was not explained. Usually, when you have an ordinance go before committee, there's a presentation, it's organized, explains what it's about. Oftentimes, there are modifications to it, to clarify things and make it so people can understand it. That did not happen here. And we don't like the fact that we did not have a vote, or a voice in this. But what I really don't like is that you didn't have a voice in this. What we're doing here tonight is, we're going to try to give you that voice. By the way, the mayor's chief of staff is over here, so he will hear this. But I want you to tell us what you think about it, and testify, the two minutes, that's what we usually do before council committees. That's what we want to hear tonight. We want to hear what you think about this, and so that we can go forward after this and talk about what the next steps are, if there are any that we can take. I'm very happy to introduce my second district colleague, Teresa Lower.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you all so much for coming out tonight. I kind of had my fingers crossed as I drove up, thinking, well, I hope a few people showed up, because the night's so, the rain is so bad and the weather's so bad. And, you know, the Northlanders never let me down, they never let me down. I'm your at-large council member for the second district. As I said this morning, I moved here when I was 15 years old, been in the Northland ever since. Raised my kids here, graduated from North Kansas City High School, graduated from Park College, both my kids, one, both my kids graduated from Oak Park High School, now my grandkids are at Staley High School. We are Northlanders, period. And we're here to represent the Northland tonight. My colleagues have already said, we were left out of the process. I mean, what? We just kind of went, what? What? What's happening here? We got notice of this ordinance, I got notice of this ordinance when my son, who is a police officer, and I am very proud of that, called me and said, Mom, are you watching this press conference? The mayor's taking $42 million out of our budget. And I said, what? I said, no, I don't know anything about this. Then when I called Heather, and I called Dan, I said, do you guys know anything about this? None of us, none of us knew anything. Couldn't get a hold of Kevin, but when I finally did, he didn't know anything about it. We didn't know anything about this. So, because they knew, if they had talked to us, what they would hear. So the mayor then says, well, we knew how you would vote, so there's just no point in even talking to you. That's what he said. So just, oops, sorry. Just write us off, because we don't count. You know? Our votes don't count, we don't represent anybody, it's only South of the River that counts. So, yeah, our tax money sure counts, because we are a net-zero taxing jurisdiction of the city. That means we give more money to the city than we get back. So the mayor and other council members, the eight council members, have continued to say, we're not taking this money out of the budget, we're not taking this money, it's staying in the police department. Well, then why did we do this? If it's staying in the budget, why did we take it out? Well, they can, they can come and beg for it now. The police department can come and ask for it now. Well, I've got both ordinances right here, and not one place in these ordinances is saying, this money will stay in the police budget. Which means that City Hall, who knows where it's going to go? So, but past that, I do want to talk about other impacts this has, other than just our police officers. I got a letter today from a woman, I have no idea who she is. She said, Dear Councilwoman Lower, my husband and I had scheduled a four-night stay in Kansas City, and after reading about the mayor's comments regarding defunding the police department, we have canceled those plans. I'm writing to you because your name was in the article, and as being opposed to the mayor's plan. I hope we prevail, in the meantime, we are taking our tourist dollars to other communities who support the police department. I wrote to Chris Hernandez and received a very nice reply, but understandably, on that reflects the mayor's efforts. Sincerely, Barbara Christensen. We're going, it's going to have an economic impact on this city, just like it did Portland, just like it did Minneapolis, just like it did Detroit, just like it did Baltimore, just like it did all of these cities who have taken money out of police budgets, who are now putting money back in the police budget. In fact, they're having to put more money back into police budgets, because there's cities burning down around them. So I'm telling you tonight, you have four people up here, this is the hill we die on, that's all there is to it. We are not backing that.
We have a couple of our fine state representatives here, Doug Ritchie.
It's an honor to be here, and certainly I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I was glad to join some of my house colleagues in sending a letter to the governor requesting a special session in response to what took place a week ago. There are a couple of things that I've learned as a legislator and as a law enforcement chaplain. As a legislator, open and transparent government is always the best form of government. When you, when you operate inconsistently with that form of government, you end up breeding questions and problems that you could have avoided easily. So I join in the voices that have already communicated their concerns about the lack of transparency and camaraderie, and it was just a mistake on the part of the mayor and the majority of the city council to do what they did. The other thing that I've learned as a state legislator is that law matters, and what we do know is that Chapter 84 of the Missouri state statutes clearly identifies that this move is not legal. The sole authority, the sole governing authority for operational decisions and priorities for the police department resides with the police board, of which the mayor is a member. So if he's concerned about the fact that the police board is not doing its job, he's a member of that body, maybe he needs to take responsibility for his actions in that Certainly, finally, as a law enforcement chaplain for many years, this is what I know, and this is what I've learned, working beside men and women who serve us in ways that we will never be able to comprehend. I know the pain that exists on the part of those who have been victimized by criminal activity. I know the pain that exists in the face of officers who've had bottles of urine thrown in their faces. I know the pain that exists when we excuse criminal behavior, and it ends up costing our communities beyond what we anticipated. I know the pain that exists when families who suffer the loss of loved ones to drug culture. I have stood over caskets officiating funerals of individuals who have taken their own lives, being immersed in criminal culture. Their families suffer tremendously. I have sat in front of police officers and troopers and deputies who, with tears in their eyes, are dealing with the scars of years of service, so that we can put our heads on the pillow at night comfortably, without concern for our safety. I have sat in front of spouses of officers who, every time their spouse leaves, they wait until the garage door opens to be able to relax. What we must do as a city, and yes, I do represent a part of Kansas City in my district, I may represent Eastern Clay County, but what we need to be doing as a city is doing what we can to hold criminals accountable for their activity, support the law enforcement community and their activities, and not play games with who is going to try to gain some kind of creative control over how decisions are made within the police department in Kansas City. Thank you so much for being here, and I appreciate the work that council members do.
Thank you. Chris Brown, Chris, did you want to say a few words? Chris is my state rep, he also may be yours.
Thank you. Overwhelming to see so many people here tonight. So again, my name is Chris Brown, I'm the state rep in District 16, which straddles kind of 152, going from Liberty over to Platte County. I left Benedictine College in 1988, and I've been in the Northland ever since. I have, I just retired from teaching, 32 years in the North Kansas City School District, and I just finished my first term as a legislator in Jeff City. I walked in the door when I came here tonight, and one of the very first people that I happened to see was now Major Joel Lovelady. Joel, are you still in here, or did you leave? Never, there he is, back there. So Joel, my, my very first year teaching, when I talk of high school, I had Joel as a freshman in, in City. I did. It's making me feel old, and I don't understand that, I'm only 35. I don't know how this happened, but I had Joel in class his freshman year, and Teresa was talking about her long, long relationship here at the Northland. I had her son in class and her granddaughter in class. So anyway, nevertheless, I'll tell you, I don't like the process and I don't like the product. The process has been certainly non-transparent, it's been divisive, the product is long on rhetoric and short on specifics. I've heard the mayor talk about this a lot, I don't understand it, and I don't understand how you're going to take 40-plus million dollars from the police budget and not cut officers. I'm struggling with that, I'm not sure how that is going to play out, but I just want you to know that I'm going to do everything I can for Kansas City Police Department.
Hi, my name is Patty Miller, and I do have a son that works for the KCPD. And my questions to the councilman and the state representative, you've kind of answered it, what could we do to stop this procedure? I heard the mayor a couple of days ago saying that if they filed a lawsuit, they might want to be careful, because they might lose control over the KCPD, and my question, is
Thank you, allow me to speak to the city council members, to the police department. My dad was a police officer. My cousin's the sheriff of Orange County. My kids was raised in the police athletically. Very good point. There's been a lot of crime in our community. Crime has risen. Now, you may not like what I'm about to say, and police don't normally commit crime. The only crime that's committed by police officers, when they shoot an unarmed black man. Yeah, and that's, that's for real. White, black, unarmed citizen, period. Okay, I'm a taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer. I have friends on the police department. I'm a taxpayer. And whether we have one or one million police officers for the past three years is telling, it doesn't make a difference, because crime's still rising. I was talking to a resident. When you want to shift, I'm with Lucas, I'm sorry to tell you, I'm with him on this. When you want to shift money, I'd rather ship it to neighborhoods so they can get some goddamn, excuse me, get some sidewalks. I'm really, Teresa, you've been among us in the urban summit, and you know our plight out south, out south. Now, if the mayor never had a meeting without you guys, that's wrong. That's really wrong, I'm not for that. Everybody should be inclusive, but tell the whole information, just don't give these people part of that information. I'd rather see my money go into human lives, to mental health. I lost a sister this year because of murder. Police department do not commit the crimes that we think, they respond to it. They spent countless hours solving homicides. And, thank you, I know my time's up, but I'm really for what is right. I'm really for, and to have a meeting without the mayor's here, not here, another city council person, don't have balance to that. Thank you.
I've been informed that the mayor and the other eight council people were invited tonight, so. One person I forgot to introduce is Lisa Minardi. Lisa is Teresa Lower's council assistant, before that she was mine, before that she was Bill Skaggs, before that she was mine, before that she was Teresa Lower. So she's been with us a long time. Who's next?
Kathy Coulter, Greg Mills, Tom Coulter. Can you put the question together?
Yeah, I wanted to say, today I had a couple of police officers by my house there, I got to talk to them. And I asked them, I said, you know, they're trying to defund the police. And he said, you guys were lucky today, we had six people, or six officers, north of the river up here. Should have been around yesterday, you had four, because two of them was pulled out south. So we had, CPS was robbed right down below my house, down there, day before yesterday. Luckily, we had a cop with a K-9 unit, right there, real close to it. Because they chased that kid down, and that dog took a hunk out of his hind end, bigger, bigger than a brick. And he took the drugs that he stole and threw them straight in air, and they all landed all over the ground. But that kid's going to remember that dog. But what kind of police force we going to have with just four, five, six cops here north of the river? You know, if we got people that's running our government illegally, what'd we put them in office for? Why not vote them out? Hold a special election and get them out? Everybody in there should be clapping over that. We need to get them out.
Clarence Kelly was the former chief of police in Kansas City, went on to be the second permanent director of the FBI. And Chief Kelly said, there's two kinds of mistakes. There's a mistake of the mind, and there's a mistake of the heart. Mistakes of the mind can be forgiven, because it has to do with information and training. Mistakes of the heart cannot be, because it has to do with character. Everybody in this room was disenfranchised by the eight South council members and by Their mistake in that was a mistake of the heart. They did it to us once, and they'll do it to us again, because they saw that they can. That's what we have to guard against. Reallocation versus defunding, we hear that, and you can put all the lipstick you want on the defunding pig, but it is defunding. They're saying that it's reallocated, all you've got to do is come back and convince the nine South land people that took it away to begin with, that you deserve to have it back in your community. That's all you have to do. Do you think that's going to work? And if we even did that, the Board of Police Commissioners advocates its responsibility as being the sole managers of this police department, to seek that sort of guidance, that sort of permission to do their job. That's it? Can I say one more thing? We've heard a lot of anecdotal information about Kansas City and say this is good, Kansas City and say this is what's needed. Well, I've got some anecdotal information I want to know about. Antidoteally, do the people in this room support the Kansas City, Missouri Police Do the people in this room support Chief Smith and the Board of Police?
For everybody watching on Facebook Live or watching on Channel 2, you can email TownhallNorth@KCMO.org, and we're going to try to read some of those emails in between y'all coming up. So our next three people, Kathy Coulter, Tim Johnston, Brandon Dunaway, just make your, make your way up here.
The main thing that I wanted to state was, the way that it was done, was what confused me the most, and maybe no, that we were not considered, or, and I didn't feel like I was actually being a person here in the Northland, because we weren't talked to about it. Defunding the police is not the answer. We know the crime has been going up here in the Kansas City area for quite some time. It's not going to get better, especially when you make policemen feel like they're not valued, that the money that they should be getting for raises and for additional policemen in the Kansas City area, is just not there, because the mayor has a different agenda than what we feel like, as a city, we are in need of. So I am in favor of this special commission that they're trying to get up.
Hello. My name is Tim Johnston, and I want to follow up on Representative Ritchie's comments earlier. You said it was a mistake, what they did last week. It was more than a mistake, it was shameful. It was completely shameful. We are all voters, and we elected these four people to represent us, and they were shut out. And that's the exact reason there should not be a local control if these kind of actions are going to happen. One other thing off-topic, a few years ago, we voted $800 million of GIO bond monies, it was supposed to go through the whole city. You know how much the five-year plan is right now? Northland gets less than 20%. This is what we are constantly treated- This is what we are constantly treated on. I know we all feel shorted up here in the Northland. And the reality is, it is. And now they're trying to short us of our own people that we elected. So, give them hell, all right? Just give them hell. So, they intentionally left the Northland out. He doesn't care. It doesn't matter about our lawsuits, it doesn't matter about our special sessions. He did it because he knows he can, and he's gonna get away with it, and he's gonna do it every time. There's only one solution.
Get him out.
No, no. Let them stay. We elect our own government, and we start our own city, and we separate from Kansas City. We stop sending them tax money, and put it to where we're gonna use it. They don't want the cops down there, we'll take them all up here. When they send their health inspectors up here, we kick them back across the bridge. When they send their fire inspectors up, we kick them back across the bridge. We start our own city, and we keep our own money. Ms. Lors, I know your son, I know his wife, and my daughter is friends with your granddaughter. And you said that, that you were gonna die on this hill, but to be quite honest with you, I don't think that any of you are actually gonna fight on this hill. And if nobody here wants to fight on this hill, we all get what we deserve.
Good evening. I am Amy Justice. I work for Councilman Fowler as his legislative aide. During the course of this, as Lisa suggested, we have been getting some emails in, right as we, we produced a new email address specifically for this evening. And I'm gonna read a couple as we go through some of these. One that I received in particular was from Robert and Linda Jenkins. They live in the Kansas City 64119 zip code. They stated, "We were appalled to hear that the budget for the Kansas City Police Department had been cut, and by such a large amount of money. I do not understand how elected officials representing us take such a drastic action without public input. We wholeheartedly support our police department and the work they do. Any defunding of the department will lead to more crime in our community. We are totally against any defunding."
Lana Henderson, you wanna come up and speak, or you wanna read what's here? Okay. It says, "Do not defund the police. Move the money, 42 million, to general purpose, where it can be used for..."
No, not, not.
I'm sorry. Do not move, do not move the money where it will be used for the wrong things? All right. We citizens want to have a say and vote where the tax dollars are going. Lisa Daniels, Laura Owens, Trudy Myers.
Hi there. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I will. I just wanted to say how disappointed and sad I was to hear the way that this went down. I'm a teacher here in this community, and I work with little people. And it terrifies me how many cops are on the street in the Northland. And if something were to happen to my babies, who's gonna come? And if we're gonna take more money from the department, who's gonna protect my littles? And that's all I wanted to say.
Laura Owens is next.
I belong to an organization that no one wants to belong to. It's called Missouri Concerns of Police Survivors. My husband was a Kansas City, Missouri officer that was killed in the line of duty. Officer Thomas R. Myers. Many of you Northlanders know him. You either grew up with him when he was officer-friendly, community relations. He helped get the Northland Neighborhood Program started. I'm concerned about the rest of the officers that are still working the streets. I have held the hand of families who've lost an officer. Many of them are on the back of my shirt. I don't want to see any more like this. I used to be a Northlander. Teresa, I knew your husband when he was like in second grade. I know your mother-in-law. Unfortunately, I moved south of the river, trying to correct that situation. However, my council people, or I live in 64131, never requested my information or my We need to back the Northland. We need to back the officers. We need to take care of them. Please, be concerned about the safety of the officer and their families.
You need me to bring you the microphone, because you're buried in the back? Just like wave frantically. Lisa Daniels, Charles Miller, Linda Norris, Brad Lemon. You should make your way up, or I can bring you the microphone.
No, don't do that.
Yeah, we can't. We're gonna be on Facebook Live.
Good evening. I'm Brad Lemon. I'm the president of the Kansas City, Missouri Patrol of Police. I represent the rank and file of the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department and every civilian that works for our department. I'm ashamed for this city. Twenty-nine years of service I've given to this police department. I've been to the funerals of officers that have died, including Tom Marres. Today, we are looking at a department that only has 1,250 police officers, and in 2007, we had 1,460. We are going backwards at a speed no other department in the country can even imagine. But we talk about crime, and what are we going to do about it? Well, you know what we're not going to do? We're not gonna call social workers to protect this city. We wanted to fire. The videos of people running into the places, the people getting shot, are not, are not social workers. They're not politicians. They're police officers. And the fact that we are stripping our ability to protect this city from us is shameful, and is absolutely ridiculous that they, that this was done without the voice of half this city. And it isn't just the Northland that was ignored, because John Sharp's here, I'm getting phone calls and emails from leaders from all over this city that, that absolutely do not agree with what just happened. We had a three-month process where we could talk about the budget, and this never happened. In three months, we didn't talk about stripping 42 million. And I'm gonna tell you, it's not 42 million. We lost $12 million on May 1 already. We are $54 million unfunded. Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
That's fifty-four. I had a conversation with a member of the mayor's staff when I said, "If you cut us this money, we will be a smaller department at the end of the year." And they said, "No, we talked to the city manager, that's not true. We've lost 45 police officers by the, already this year." Where's that coming from?
They gave you 3 million.
They gave us 3 million if we do what they say that we have to do. And if our Board of Police Commissioners, when they do tomorrow, files that lawsuit, the city's going to say you're going to lose the 42 million dollars. I held the first roll call in Shoal Creek. I did work out of this place. When we opened up Shoal Creek, I had six people in my roll call. I can show you stats today where we're working with two people per sector, sometimes one person per sector. And they're being called south of the river to handle this. This is not an us-versus-them issue. This is not a north-versus-south. This is a Kansas City issue, but the people north of the river were ignored. And I'm sorry, my time's up, but I got one more thing to say. The elections are coming up, and there are nine people you better not support.
Charlie Miller, Linda Norris, Natalie Mentrup. If I called your name, head up.
My name is Natalie Mentrup, and I am a product of the Northland, of Northland schools, neighborhoods, swim teams, people. And, you know, 63 years a Northlander, how many times did I walk the halls up here? And in my 35-year adult career of working overseas with the military as a teacher, I've seen a lot. I've seen lots of places, I've seen lots of people. You talk about diverse, I've seen diverse. I've seen people from all over our country, all over the world, pretty much every combination I can imagine. But when I talk about coming, where I came from, and the things that happened when I was growing up in this place, people can't believe how good we had it. We grew up here under blue suburban skies. Yes, it was lily-white, but my neighborhood is not lily-white anymore. Our minorities, yes, are a minority, okay. But we have all kinds of people here. And today, I about lost it with the Kansas City Star editorial board. All four Northland council members vigorously opposed the plan and mischaracterized it. Shame on you people. No wonder we didn't tell you. Northland Republicans in the Missouri Legislature vowed to overturn the mayor's decision. Talks of secession, blah, 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 yeah, I know. Sixty-three years here, we've gone through all that. There's always been inherent tensions. Because Kansas City North is more Republican, suburban, and white. Oh, boy, if I gotten into, into it with some of you Democrats out there that they don't know we're here. The police needs our center on break-ins and car accident response times. We had two shootouts in the last two weeks, two or three robberies, how many shots fired the, the borough rink? And the mayor has gone to this length because he wants local control. I don't want that local control. I didn't vote for that local control. It's not right, and frankly, he's really done a bad thing. And, you know, you know what I mean to tell you, but, man, we gotta keep in it, because the guy that wants local control doesn't want us to have local control, so.
We have a, a large number of people who want to speak, so, again, keep your comments to two minutes or less. Thank you.
Right, Linda, Linda Norris, Anna Stelmach, sorry if I'm mispronouncing, Rhonda Amaguen, Arigan, anyone? And Jimmy Fitzner. So, come on, can wait in line up here.
Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for everybody that's here, and our mayor is a putz. And just to read quickly, Central Patrol Division is losing $9,701,000. East Patrol is losing $4,190,000. Metro's losing $8 million. Okay, and then it says, goes on to talk about how they'll, "Oh, but we'll, we'll give it back to you if you request it, as long as we can," you know, they want control over where the money goes, because they can't get it by the votes. Because twice in the last decade, we voted, "No, we don't trust you. We trust the state to run our police department, we don't trust you." And then, "We don't like them taking our E-tax." So, we keep saying, "Why? It was supposed to be temporary. Let's not pay it anymore." "Oh, no, no, we needed to run the budget. We need it, we need it." It was never supposed to be part of your budget, was it? It was supposed to do the roads, it was supposed to expire. So, then twice now, we voted to let them keep it, because they keep threatening that they're gonna cut our budget to the police department and the fire department if we don't. And this last time, the mayor said, what, less than two months ago? "Oh, no, 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 we need that money. We need that money, or we're gonna have to cut the police department. The police department budget, we need that money." So, we all voted, right? Not me, because I'm not that stupid, but a lot of people voted to keep that E-tax. And you know what? He's laughing at you. He's laughing at you. He's laughing at me. He's laughing at all of us, because he's extorting money from the police department now, when he said he wasn't gonna do it, right? Said he wasn't gonna do it. You know what I'm gonna do tomorrow? I'm going to the Clay County. Yeah, you think it's funny? I'm going to the Clay County Courthouse tomorrow. I am filing a lawsuit, okay? I'm filing a lawsuit in small-place court to get my E-tax back. And if all of us do that, we'll tie him up in court for the next two years, and he can't do any more damage to our state. Let's do it, okay? Let's do it. Because he misrepresented, as politicians like to say, he misrepresented the truth. Well, I, I like to call it lying, and he's a putz.
That's a hard one to follow. Hi, I'm Anna. I am a licensed clinical social worker. So, hey, Brad Lemon, I'm a social worker. I'm also a mental health therapist, run a private practice, and I'm hearing a lot of folks here feeling left out, which is, you know, of course, concerning. I'm also noticing, when I look around the room, there are a lot of white people here. And the people in the city of Kansas City, Missouri, where the violent crime occurs, right? We've talked about, somebody said lily-white or something, and then they're worried about minorities moving in, I don't know. But, as we know, where poverty exists, where poverty exists, simultaneously, crime increases because of lack of resources.
Be respectful, guys, please.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Please, everyone remain respectful. We want to hear from all of you, whether the speaker agrees with your point of view or not. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, my understanding is that the reallocation of the funding is into community, programming, prevention of violent crime, mental health, conflict resolution, different preventative measures, such as like education, everything like that, I would assume. So, it's difficult to look before this crowd who doesn't experience the violence in the city where it's happening.
And her dog, she's not gonna stop crying.
So, the other part to consider is that the money that's being reallocated is money that now we, the people, get to have some knowledge about where it's going.
Please, people, all the, both sides, I want to hear this lady. I wanted to hear her. And this is not the Northland to shout people down like that. I'm sorry. We need to hear every viewpoint, and that's what we're here to do. So, please, be respectful. I want to hear both sides. I want to hear all sides. So, I'm sorry, I didn't like what you all just did. I apologize. But I want to hear everybody, okay? That's what we do up here. Thank you.
What answers?
Second call for Linda Norris, Jim Fitzner. Jim Fitzner said, "Indian mound neighbor that spends money here in the Northland. I want the same investment in the Northland and the Northeast."
Thank you all for having me. I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance. I live on the Northeast side. I have law enforcement in my family. My aunt is the chief of police of Raymore. Her husband is, was the interim chief of police here in Kansas City, Missouri. I love them dearly. I want them to come home safe every night. I also don't want them to have to use their service weapon, any of their officers to have to use their service weapon. If they're ill-equipped in the situation, if somebody's having a mental health crisis, I appreciate you guys being silent while I'm speaking. I do sincerely... I appreciate you guys being silent while I'm speaking, I do sincerely appreciate that. I'm speaking today as a neighbor on the other side of that river. And, full disclosure, went to school with Mr. Dunaway, and it doesn't surprise me at all how smart and innovative and eloquent he was, because I think that he's always been that way. He said that he would prefer to de-annex the, or, I'm sorry, to have the North Kansas City separate. And I would like to politely speak on the other side of that. As your neighbor, who comes here and spends a lot of my money, I mean, I don't have Target. There's no Target in the Northeast side. There's no Walmart. I get my oil changed up here. This is where I come, I spend money, my hard-earned money, my wife's hard-earned money, for our children, and, you know, we don't view y'all, we need help, we're desperate, we need help up there. And it's not just, you know, people firing firearms at each other. There's people who are desperate, and they're poor, and they're in despair. And we need all the resources we can get in all sorts of different areas, and I want to have conversations about how to be more innovative. Because I've been in there, in the Northeast side, for 30 years, and the budget goes up, 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 so does the crime. How can we, we're here just asking these questions, how do we do something a little bit differently? The politics aside, they can worry about how screwy it was that they didn't get the call, because maybe that's BS, probably is. That's not my concern over there on the Northeast side. I just want solutions, we're desperate, and one of those things, I think, is that we need to stay together, that we're one city, and we need to work together, because we need your help. We need your help over there on the Northeast side. And I think that includes, that includes speaking up for people who are poor and have, are having a mental health crisis. And I want those police to have all the resources they have. Thank you very much for your support.
Lisa, Randy and Lynda Orr, David Kissey.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I want to say that I stand here before you in complete support of our law enforcement. I used to be a Jackson County prosecutor, my godfather is a law enforcement official. Actually, he scared away one of my first boyfriends in high school by coming over and picking me up for my first date with him. So I'm no stranger to law enforcement, but I do want to be clear, this is not an effort to defund the police. I grew up in 64128, the most dangerous neighborhood in this entire city. I need somebody to call when I'm in danger, when my mother is in danger. And this is simply not that. I wouldn't even necessarily use the term reallocate, maybe reroute, because unlike what Councilwoman Laura said in the first paragraph of the second ordinance, it only authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with the Board of Police Commissioners, the exclusive entity that has management and control over the Kansas City Police Department. It's going right back where it came from, you all, just with certain parameters on how it can be best and effectively used to keep our city safe. Unlike the Northland, I ran for my first shootout when I was 12 years old. This crisis is not new to the individual, the tourist that wrote a letter concerned about safety and taking her tourist dollars elsewhere. Kansas City has always been dangerous in certain pockets of it. And all that we're trying to do with this money is to make sure that it's being deployed in the most effective way, because clearly, something is not working. We hit a homicide record last year when Operation Legend sent more officers to our area. Clearly, something is not working. And the police department enters into contracts with other entities that gives it money. Combat just gave the police department $9.5 million under contract. The city does the same exact practice with KCATA, the Black Archives of Mid-America. This is not an astonishing move, you all, this is increasing accountability so that the citizens of Kansas City are getting the services that it pays for. And unfortunately, Kansas City Police Department has not been as transparent as city council would like it to be. In July of last year, we asked, we passed a resolution that asked for a transparency dashboard. Simply, all KCPD had to do was send over data to Data KC at the city, so that we could show the community what we are facing in real, hard, clear data. They have yet to oblige that request. They have yet to oblige that request. At the Board of Police Commissioner meetings, there is no discussion about strategic innovative crime reduction strategies. They just gloss over the amount of homicides that we are currently dealing with. We are on par to deal with the same number that we met last year. So, you all, I ask for you to open your minds. I understand many of you have criticisms about the process and how this decision was reached, but look at the substance of the ordinances. You know, we all want the same thing, a safe Northland, a safe inner city, more accountability for our elected officials in our government, and this is a clean and clear way to accomplish that. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you have a great year.
Hello, my name's David Kissey. I've been a Northrend resident since, well, 1986, and I'm also a father and a husband. I'm also a field sergeant for Kansas City, Missouri Police Department. I work in one of the high-crime areas in the city, Metro Patrol. Yeah. Just some examples I can give as a field supervisor. The other night, Northland had no coverage. They had a sergeant that was still up in the field. All the other officers were sent down to calls in East Zone, Metro, and South Zone. South Zone is about a 40-minute drive. If you're running code, it may be about 30. The vehicles that we're driving, they're not capable of doing this all the time. We're driving cars with 200,000 miles on them that are falling apart. It's not safe. I care about every one of the officers that works for me. They're very diverse, I mean, very diverse. I love my officers, and I hope you do too, and I hope the city council and the state reps can do something about this, because, as my wife said, the way this was passed appears to be illegal, and if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, craps like a duck, we got crap.
All right, we have a couple more here I'm gonna read that are pretty short. We got one from Marty Schuppels, hopefully I did not slaughter his last name. He says, "Main thing I want to know is where do things currently stand, and now what, is this a done deal or far from it?" So I know that you guys can address some of these comments later. We also have another one from, it looks like a Carrie Jacks, and she states, "I am for additional funding for," let's see here. She says she's for additional funding for police. "I am for stricter, more aggressive laws to make sure all violent crimes and property damage are stopped. I understand without the North council members, the budget for police has been redistributed elsewhere. I am now forced to exclude going to any entertainment in Kansas City out of concern for my safety. The vast majority of people understand the police do an excellent job, and mainstream media is not telling the true statistics. COVID-19 pales in comparison to the terrorist attacks I have witnessed against police and my city in the last year. I'm not certain I will ever recover from what I have witnessed. Please reverse this defunding so Kansas Cityans can once again host conventions and citizens can feel safe. I would hate to see a mass exodus from the city where I have lived all my life. We, the people, are not buying this nonsense."
Okay, Ken Rumney, Lori Horton, Sandra Sainer. And I will read this, it says, "We came to support our KC officers and are very disappointed in the mayor and his cohorts for the decisions he's making regarding the safety of the city he's supposed to be supporting. Thank you, Randy and Lynda Orr."
Hi, my name's Ken Rumney. I had three questions originally, but you've pretty much addressed the underhanded nature of which the ordinances were passed and agreed upon. I'm not a lawyer, but basic math tells me that if we're, payroll is 87% to 90% of the police budget, and we're cutting 18% out of that budget. Excuse me?
28.
28, better. Right? So, tell me that there's not a defunding going on. And more importantly, last year during the peaceful protests, Mayor Lucas eloquently, on camera, said, "Our law enforcement is rotten at its core." That's on tape. I asked the mayor about this when he came to the Northland before, and he said, "I hear you, I hear you." Clearly, he does not hear us. And what this rhetoric does, besides reallocating to social services, which we're all in favor, we understand that that needs some uplifting, but not at the cost of our officers. And our officers, if you, hey, if any of you are on social media and you see the Facebook video that went out last week of the Westport incident, where there was an armed, an armed individual in an altercation. In Center Patrol, we had, we had officers on duty and off duty that ran to the trouble. They risked their lives, their sanity, to deal with the situation at hand. And while they're dealing with the situation, we have the rhetoric and the practically mobbed violence towards them as they're trying to do their job. That's what the mayor's rhetoric is doing. So, that's all I've got to say about that. He is, he is absolutely defunding the law and order portion of our society, and this is what we're getting out of it, is chaos. Thank you. Apparently, another way to communicate besides Facebook Live, if you know my cellphone number, you can send me a text. Ed, I'm watching remotely from work and have no other way to provide input. As a nearly 24-year paramedic here in KCMO, oftentimes, when responding to violent crimes such as assaults, rapes, shootings, and stabbings, EMS and fire are not allowed to enter the scene without the police department securing the scene first. Delayed response times will only lead to higher fatalities and a higher homicide rate. With the already high response times in the Northland, this will not only have an effect over the homicide rate citywide, but a disproportionate effect in the Northland. Please, to you council members present tonight, please don't let this go unanswered. Fight this with everything you've got, I beg of you. Regards, Donald Pickard, a paramedic retired and lifelong Northlander.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Sainer. My husband and I are transplants to Kansas City, we've been here 18 and a half years. And I can say with no hesitation, in our 18 and a half years here in the Northland, we have watched things change here, like we have seen other cities that we've had the privilege to live in. And I can tell you, you're on the precipice of not only a corrupt local government, but the destruction of your city. I come from Michigan, I was 75 miles from the city of Detroit. I'm 71 years old, and I will tell you, the 67 riots in Detroit, Detroit has never recovered, never. And you know why? Because the government was corrupt. Many of the mayors that have been mayors of Detroit are now in prison. And I will tell you, and not much has changed there, and there was a huge exodus of good, tax-paying, loving families. And my address to anyone, I am concerned about social justice, I welcome, I don't care what color you are, I don't care if you're black, orange, red, or purple, I don't care. What I want is character. Character is what matters to me. And we are responsible, we are responsible for what we do and for the choices that we make. Our mayor currently made a choice that was very short-sighted. How disgusting, not to consider, least of all, the people in this room this evening, but the entire Northland. And I will tell you also that my husband and I no longer go south of the river. I haven't been to the Plaza in nine years because I don't feel safe there. And that was a beautiful place, but it's not anymore. And my husband and I are strongly considering moving. I hope we don't have to do that because we love our neighbors, we love our community here in Kansas City. And I'm here to fight with all of you to make sure it stays that way. And I will tell you, defunding the police is not the answer. We don't need social justice, we need rule of law, where everyone is responsible for their actions.
After that, it'll be Steve Daniels, Amanda O'Connor, Louise Jones.
This is the best room I've seen in a long time. My name is Lori Horton. KCMO PD was founded in 1874 by the governor of Missouri who installed the first chief of police, Tom Spears. The chief for 21 years, the longest in Kansas City history. He was 29 years old when he was appointed and had a department of 28 men. One of those men was William Bill Davis, an African-American who served from 1874 to around 1899. One of those men, excuse me, of those men also was Lafayette Tillman, Cornelius Carter, Robert Alexander, J.J. Matt Joy, all African-Americans also part of KCMO PD history. I bring this point to bear to show that KCMO PD has been progressive since its inception. This organization is not perfect and has its ups and downs and challenges, but isn't that what happens when organizations are made up of human beings? The neatest thing is that because it is human, it can grow, it can learn, it can overcome, and it can expand the boundaries to become even better than before. The extraordinary human beings who become police officers are part and parcel of this organization that strives to help, to serve, to protect, to be there when no one else will be. To be better, the hearts that beat in the chest of these amazing people are determined and steadfast, and they need to be supported. What took place this week in this city has been determined to be less than honest, less than above-board, and less than honorable. It has proven to be duplicitous, not normal in any way. Our officers and our department deserve better. This department is open, it is transparent, and with Chief Rick Smith leading the way it continues to be progressive for the best interest and concerns for all Kansas City citizens. Is it perfect? Is it perfect? God, I hope not. For perfection ends all striving for improvement, growth, and purpose. I believe in my cops. I believe in their purpose, I believe in their growth, and I stand with them all. I love my cops.
That was noisy. I find it interesting that we're talking about accountability and how much of an outrage this is. It's awfully similar to a $42 million soccer park that was built, only it was a different set of people who voted for that without others' knowledge. While there are over 2,000 houseless people in the city who are struggling to survive. There's a lot of fear-mongering and misleading going on here, veiled threats from the FOP about how if we don't do a certain thing, everything's gonna go into chaos and everyone's gonna die. Maybe not quite to there, but, love fear-mongering. And looking out at this audience, aside from like maybe three people, it's a sea of white, a sea of privilege. People who have never actually had to live in fear. Yeah, and I'm with you, I'm with you there, I have the privilege as well, so don't think I'm not talking about myself. I've been able to see some of the fear, though. To the reaction, when it comes to the reaction that police had, just to those people in the streets speaking out against their brutality, which you may not like it, but it doesn't make it untrue, over 96% across the US were nonviolent, and of the ones that weren't, it was overwhelmingly initiated by the police. Also, I can see it in the crowds who support the police, including the people in DC on January 6th, and Kyle Rittenhouse. The closest thing I could feel to that fear is me leaving here after saying all that, considering the company in here. So, that said.
Stop the clock, a second.
Let's see your face.
No, no. Please, I want to hear what he says. In the Northland, we are respectful. Please, treat this man respectfully. He's going out of his way to address us, he does have a message. You may not agree with it, I don't agree with it, but I want to hear it, okay? So, please, show him some respect.
I think you're probably one of the more respectful people in here, thank you.
Now, I'm not going to take that kind of insult to you, but to me...
So, I'm down to my last two bullet points. I think it's time to, for us to start discussing what actually will reduce crime, instead of throwing more money at armed enforcers that are rooted in slave patrols from the 1800s, which has historically not resulted...
You're going to draw, show the truth.
And when it comes to increases in funding, historically has not resulted in reduced crime, but rather increased police violence.
How many of those people out here without masks are actually fully vaccinated?
It's always good to be lectured from someone from Overland Park.
Accountability is defined as an obligation or willingness to accept responsibility or to account for one's actions. You want to know if I want accountability? Absolutely, I do. I want accountability for the fact that the mayor left four members out of the council in the dark about this legislation. I want accountability for the mayor, city manager, and council members that did not include the chief or even give warning of this legislation to KCPD. I want accountability for a mayor who talks out of both sides of his mouth. I want accountability for a city council who clearly does not want to work together to make Kansas City a better place, but does everything possible to tear each other down and the city they work for. I want accountability for council members who continue to allow groups of, groups to camp out and trash a variety of areas in our city and call it a sit-in. I want accountability for Trey Songz, who assaulted an officer arrowhead on video but was not charged. I want accountability for Jackson County prosecutor Jean Peter Baker, who is the brute, she is the brute of all of our crime problems, as she continues to release the criminal back into the streets, allowing for the vicious cycle of violence to continue. These officers in the room, they do their jobs. She needs to do hers. I want accountability for Jackson County judges who also are to blame for all of the crime problems. I want accountability for all of the arrests in Jackson County that need to be put away and off the streets that aren't. I want accountability for Stacey Shaw and all the threats, illegal acts, and reckless behaviors she has engaged in with her fellow followers in the last year, especially the video where she threatens police officers' childrens and their schools. I want accountability for the slander and threats made against Officer Newton and his family because of Dajur Stallings. I want accountability for the fact that our mayor asked KCPD to be at the Plaza last summer for the protests and that he called many of the shots alongside Chief Smith, but takes zero responsibility for them. I want accountability for the citizens that threw rocks, frozen water bottles, fireworks, urine, broken light bulbs, a pig's head, and even real, in real-life dumpster fire at our officers who had to stand there and just take their hate. I want accountability for the peaceful protesters who were left, um, our officers down and beaten and bruised, one with a bad concussion, another sent to the hospital with a lacerated river, liver, sorry, at our Plaza, um, was vandalized, looted, and burned. I want accountability for all of that. If mayor's going to throw around accountability, all of that needs to be held accountable as well.
Chris Richmond, Shanna Gretzer, and Emerson Hayes. Again, we would ask you to keep your remarks to two minutes or less.
I promised her I'd be short, which I am. Okay, so, we've been meeting with Heather Hall for the last, well, last three, this is the third day with her. And she pointed out some really good things about the 89% that the budget, that the budget covers for, um, excuse me, for the police payroll. So, 89%, we're going to cut $42 million. That's about 300 jobs, 300 families. 300 families are going to be left without a job, without put food on the table, people that are going to be without. We need to think about that.
I'm Shanna. I'm going to follow up on that with hearing that there's about 300 jobs that'll be lost. And we've also been told in the last few days that there's a 400 position deficit of jobs that aren't even filled right now. So, if this goes through on May 30th, it'll be 700 jobs down in the KCPD. And if he's, or whoever is, if I want to say him directly, is pulling 42 million aside and then dangling this 3 million for academy class, uh, if there's, you know, 50 people that they allow into an academy class, and those people go through that and however many graduate and come out, where are the jobs going to be? If the money's being pulled aside, where are the jobs going to be? So, we're flushing, you know, 3 million down the toilet for an academy class for student or graduates that won't even be able to get a job in Kansas City, Missouri, how does that help our city?
Hi, my name is Jazz, and I'm a voter of the first district. I'm also a lifelong Northlander. I saw that our Northland council members were looking for input from Northland residents about a proposed police budget cut. And I'm here to show my council members, Heather Hall, that their constituents are not all in agreement about whether KCPD needs the money it's been getting. To give some insight into why I think a cut is justified, I'll share my most memorable experience with police. When I was a young child, I remember the KCPD coming to my home and insisting that they search it for stolen mail. My older brother, who at the time was 16, had been accused by a neighbor of stealing their mail. He was accused of it because he was, it closed a mailbox he left, he noticed left open while walking down the street. What kind of 16-year-old even understands why someone would steal mail, much less what to do with it once stolen? This most certainly wouldn't have happened if I was the one who closed the mailbox, because I'm white, my brother is black. And suppose there was a valid reason to investigate our home? Did it really need to be done by several large men with firearms on their hips? Why does an officer with a firearm need to issue traffic tickets? Why doesn't, why does someone whose primary training is in using firearms need to investigate rape? Their current role, the current role of the police is clearly not to protect people, but instead property. KCPD made that very clear last summer when they pepper sprayed, beat, and shot rubber bullets at protesters. To protect what? A couple windows on the Plaza? We need to seriously reconsider how we think about police, and a small cut is a great first step. But in reality, we need to cut a lot more. And even then, cutting the police budget isn't nearly enough. We need to take those funds and divert them into programs that actually address the problems that cause people to commit crimes. We need to invest in getting mental health care for all, especially the houseless community. While we're at it, we should also house the houseless. We need to invest... I'm sorry, sir, but there were several people before me who... I will keep speaking unless one of these officers want to carry me away in cuffs.
I might go slightly over a minute, I prepared for under two. So, hello, my name is Madison, and I'm a resident of the first district. I'm here today as a concerned citizen to talk about my experiences with the police in this city. When I was 15, I got up the courage to report my father's abuse to the police. The final straw was when he kicked on the door and threw it at me to stop me from leaving the house. I left school early that day to go to the police and hopefully get some help. I remember walking into the police station and feeling so small, I was 15 and maybe 100 pounds. I told the policeman at the desk my story of lifetime abuse, fear, and how much courage it took for me to report my dad. Do you know what he said to me? Are you sure you want to report your dad? Well, he is your dad, you wouldn't want to hurt him. Not like he hadn't been hurting me for the last 15 years of my life. If those cops can't help me, a vulnerable white girl, then who can they help? If the cops don't exist for me, then who are they for? I was lucky that day, the police didn't shoot me, or arrest me, or evict me from my home. Heather Hall and the other council members, and many of you here today, have been complaining about this cut. That is how it's happened without public input. But how can the cut have happened without public input when the police budget has no public input in the first place? Kansas City vastly overpays for the police, far beyond what state law requires. We don't even have control of how the police spend that money. I don't. As a tax-paying member of this city, have a say in the thousands of dollars spent on car washes, as the millions spent on criminalizing poor and working-class tenants, or the tens of millions criminalizing those with mental health issues. The truth is that this budget cut is not even a budget cut, and it is far from enough. We need to completely reimagine the way policing is done in this city. So, to my council members of the first district, I wanted to come here today to show you that the Northland is not a white monolith of pro-police citizens. I am here to stand in firm opposition to that.
First thing, I understand the mayor couldn't be here or thought he wasn't invited. He could have came, showed up like everybody else did, signed a piece of paper, and he could have got to talk to everybody if he really wanted to, okay? That was a dumb excuse. I've got a copy of this ordinance, and this ordinance has a bunch of numbers of where they're taking money, and it comes to 42-some million dollars. And now, you guys were blindsided on this a week ago. In the past week, what have you learned about how they're going to spend this money? Because this ordinance doesn't in any way talk about how this money's going to be spent. So, have you learned anything in a week?
Nothing. Nothing.
I mean, it's, I mean, have you talked to people? Have you tried to communicate?
The mayor still hasn't reached out yet.
The what?
Going back to the police department. That's how it would be fixed, is going back to the police department.
But we don't know where. Do they have a plan? Do they have a plan?
I apologize, we don't have time for that one. Susan Atwood, Rita Egan, and Andrea Phillips.
Hi, my name is Rita Egan. I'm also speaking for my neighbor, Susan Atwood, in regards to your comment, the lady over here in the deep, well, rearranging the budget. There have been six, at least six other cities that have done this, Minneapolis, Atlanta, Boston, Detroit, Seattle, and New York City. The Wall Street Journal listed recently that the New York City would be refunding or putting the money back in to the budget the way it originally was. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is I get a comment, a statement, excuse me, an email from the city on the audit. So, at the very bottom, it has that they're going to change the budget and the way they review it, and engage city council members to identify potential audit topics. So, I hope you all have been included on this, because this was actually published on the 10th, and nothing was listed about this 42 million change, and it was just released today. So, the budgetary changes are not being put out there, not only for you, but for the public all the way around. So, it's just something to keep in mind and keep an eye on.
While this next speaker comes up, I've been told we only have time for a couple more. So, I would ask that anyone who's signed up that has something different to say, that hasn't been said, maybe to go ahead and line up. But we only have time for two or three more.
Hi, my name's Andrea Phillips. I am a proud police wife. My husband's been on the department for 25 years. He came home about a month ago. He came home a month ago and said, "I'm, I'm done. December, I'm retiring." And then, his mind changed again. And I can't tell you the roller coaster that we as families go through, to know that our loved ones go to protect each and every one of you in this room, whether you like them or not. He puts his boots on, he puts his vest on, and he goes to do it for you. He doesn't do it for me. He leaves my house every day, and he runs towards the danger. I hold my breath a little each day, until I hear him open my garage door, and I hear the sound of Velcro. And until you ever heard that sound, you will never know, you will never know how we feel. But I want you to know that they love you, they love the communities that they serve. And these young men that are young over here, I pray for you every day, because you've got a whole new battle, and I'm at the end.
My name's Maureen Sanford, I'm a Native American elder. You want to know violence, try a reservation sometime. We're all Americans. I don't want to hear this white, black, I'm half-white, half-Brad, I'm pink, try that one on. So, I don't, we're all Americans, we want low crime. There's kids downtown that hear shots all night long. We don't want to be like that. We want crime down in America. We don't want to be St. Louis that's number one. So, I got some specifics I'm going to ask, because transparency wasn't given to these people. Now, how the heck can the mayor and that group ask for transparency when they don't show it? I want to know, this group of people and this mayor, what's their background? How the heck did they make this decision? Was it the success of other cities that defunded? You know, I lived in Minneapolis, let me tell you, that isn't the same, and I don't want to live there until they clean it up. I want to know, what, what did they do? Did they poll the constituents? Is that who they're representing? And, and why don't they tell the police which one of these constituencies gets no funding? And then, they're responsible for any actions. Don't make the police choose. And then, also, did they do it on the call, history? Did they make this 42 million? I'm okay with the 42 million if it goes to a group of police that are moved to a gang history group and go after the gangs. They'll still employ the police, we got gangs downtown and nobody mentions it. Something's not right here.
Okay, we were told earlier that 1,400 people were in the police force in 2007. It's already been reduced to 1,250. We're hearing from the police officers, and we know in the Northland that there are scant police officers. And now, with a budget cut to the police department of 54 million, which is 12 and 42, from a $240 million budget, which is a quarter of the budget, 92% of which is for personnel, we can expect 3 to 4, 3 to 500 officers, personnel, to be let go. We've talked about the, we've talked about the process of undercover darkness. Why, why the rush? Why the cover of darkness? Why the secrecy? Well, to me, it looks like it's already known this is a widely unpopular policy. There isn't a representation of the people in this policy, this is a circumvention of the people, a circumvention of democracy. It's an attempt to grab power and to impose his will. This is, the murder rate in, under Lucas's watch, is the worst in Kansas City history. 176 murders in 2020, 151 in 2019, a 28% increase under Mayor Lucas's watch. What is his solution to fight crime? To shut down the police?
Thank you. I know some of you in this room, I've done 30 years in law enforcement, and first of all, I'd like to say that I am tired of having to apologize for the way I look and where I live. I don't want to be characterized that way, and I'm tired of individuals reducing all of us to the color of our skin. There's a heck of a lot more to us than the color of our skin, there are experiences, there are our, our hopes and needs and such. At the same time, I'm tired of them blaming everything on the police officer that arrives that they call themselves. Police work is ugly. Police work is ugly, and if you do it right, you help a good number of individuals. There are some individuals that have to go to jail. Unfortunately, that's where they belong at that particular moment in time. Do we need social services? Absolutely. My daughter suffered from paranoid schizophrenia. I had to call the police to my house. Talk about embarrassing. But I needed them, just like the other lady indicated. I needed them to help me get her help. As far as defunding, reallocating, the money isn't there. You can call it whatever you want to call it. It means now that you have to go to another group of people that do not have the expertise, have never been in law enforcement, cannot provide a plan on how to fix anything. I hear accountability. Well, the budget of the police department has been published for years. The actions that were taken by the city council just recently occurred in, in the darkness, and now we're all here. Sorry, thank you very much.
I'm making sure. My name is Carolyn, and my significant other has been a police officer for over thirty years, and he was going to stick it out, but yesterday, he worked for East Patrol. He and two other senior members of his constituents put in their retirement papers, and it's a sad day, because he really wanted to, you know, wait till he got replacement and stuff. I can tell you that one thing I, I, I'm not clear on is how much the mayor spends on his own personal detail, at our taxpayers' money, and what I heard was a half a million dollars a year. That's unacceptable. We make up, Northland makes up forty percent of the Kansas City population. We should have more say, we should have more council members to represent the forty percent that we make up. We make up fifty-one percent of the landmass. So, that being said, I hope that we're successful in getting this rescinded, and thank you all for being here. Thank you.
I'm Jenny Walters. I have a lot more written down, but I'm going to make two statements. Number one is, I think everyone in this room who attended tonight should write to the governor and also request the special meeting. So that's, that's the first thing I say, and that's something that I'm going to do personally. The next thing I want to say is that it's, I'm surprised that the mayor's office does not have the transparency dashboard from the police department, because I have a copy of the website.
In conclusion, I'm going to ask if any of the council folks would like to say a few concluding words, but I wanted to personally thank everyone for coming out tonight. I apologize for those who signed up to speak that you didn't get the opportunity. Those that had comments, I gave those to the council people so they could see those. So with that, if any of the council people would like to say some concluding remarks?
I just want to thank you all for coming out. I don't want to belabor that point, but I, I know it was raining, and I really, we heard a lot, so we really appreciate your voice, and we appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Well, you guys gave us a lot of things to think about, pro, con. This is exactly what we ask for. We ask for transparency, we ask for accountability, and what we asked for mostly was for the process of our legislative process to go the way it's supposed to go, which is, it goes to committee, it, we offer public testimony, and then we vote on things. That's the way it's supposed to go, and so tonight, you had your opportunity to hear and to be part of something that you should have been a part of ahead of time, just like the rest of us. So I'm so glad you came. I want to tell you, there are fifty people cards here in this room who did not get to speak tonight. I counted it, and of these fifty cards, forty-eight are opposed to defunding the police department and two are for defunding the police department. So if you'd like to come look at them, you're welcome to make sure I'm not lying about the county. The last thing I'll say before we go is, we had several phone calls, several emails, several everything in our offices, and this week, since last Thursday, so it's been a week exactly, we, our aides have been working tirelessly throughout the day and night to get information to you. Over a hundred and thirty different separate emails have come to each one of our offices, and over, well, actually, I'm sorry, there are more than that, like a hundred and fifty, but a hundred and thirty-eight, just as I was counting with my aide, a hundred and thirty-eight were against this legislation, and thirteen were for this legislation, and those were from people all over the city. That's, that's not, that's not something that I'll be speaking to tonight, but I'm sure there's other people in the public who might be wanting to speak about that, but that's not something I have any comment on. And then finally, I just want to say, we have citizen satisfaction surveys that we do all the time in all the different categories, and my, our aides all work tirelessly on all these different aspects. Today, Marcus showed me that of the top five priorities in fiscal year twenty-one, the top priority was police services, and they had the highest satisfaction of, over fifty-six percent in this year of citizen satisfaction of all the top categories. And just to give you an idea, yes, that's very good. I would say, by and large, the people of this city respect and, and, and trust the people of the Kansas City Police Department to do the job that they're doing. Otherwise, these citizens, these numbers would not be what they are. Just to give you an idea, of all of the importance of the questions, so we ask our citizens, what's important, and then how satisfied are you by the things that are most important to you? And the top three, there's three things that are the most important. We looked at these, and the quality of police services, it was ranked at number two of importance with the level of thirty-three, thirty-five-point-three percent level of importance, which is good for the number of people that responded. And then satisfaction, fifty-seven-point-five percent satisfaction, third of all the sixteen categories that get requested of status of importance. They're number three, only behind fire services and park services. So people of Kansas City care about their police services, and they appreciate what they're doing. Otherwise, those numbers wouldn't be there. The last thing I'll say, thank you so much to Ann and I for hosting this and being here so late tonight. Thank you to all of you for sticking it out. This is a long night. Very important. Thank you to the, our, our past and present colleagues who have joined us, who care about this. I want to thank the folks from the State House who came to join us. Thank you for caring about your people in the Northland. We appreciate it. And also, I want to thank the people from the mayor's office. Yes, we wish our colleagues would have shown up, and that's the, that's how that works, but at least you came up to help represent what his, his vision was. We appreciate that, but we need more. We really do. We need more accountability and transparency by the mayor himself. So that's what we're asking for. And finally, and truly most importantly, I want to shout out, and I'd like you guys to stand when I say your names, so we know where you are, Marcus Smith is my legislative aide. Thank you for all the hours you put in. Diana, Amy, Lisa. This would not have happened without them, so we get to do, we get to have the fun up here at this table, but truly, they do the lion's share of the work, and we are so grateful. Thank you all for your work. Thank you for what you did, and thank you for being a great moderator and keeping us on task as much as possible. We really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
I'm losing my eyes. Well, I'll just be very brief. Thank you all very, very much for coming and sharing your, your perspectives on both sides, because we do like to hear that, and Ann and I does this as a community service, so we don't want to overtax their resources, so that's why we were trying to leave early tonight, so we can let them clean up and get back something to do business tomorrow. Thank you all very much.